Let's begin. The meeting is recorded, just so everyone's aware. New items of discussion?
I do have one thing that I wanted to raise real quick before we get into the oil and gas conversation, which is that when I was at CCAP, the discussion was brought up about Airbnb. Did I bring that up in work session yet?
No.
I think I have.
You have it.
So, the state of Pennsylvania through CCAP, I believe, was able to negotiate a contract with Airbnb so that when hotel tax, so that basically Airbnb adds hotel tax in Pennsylvania and does take it. But then you need a separate agreement, each county needs a separate agreement with Airbnb in order to remit payment to the county. And so Butler County and several other butlers, who I was talking to about it, there were several counties that have already done it. We should get the language that Butler County passed for an agreement with Airbnb, and it should be standard enough that Airbnb will just countersign immediately. But Dan, would you be willing to?
So then, does the Airbnb itself submit that to us?
Correct.
Because I have one that's already signed up.
Right.
And I have got another call this morning on another one that is getting ready to sign up.
Yeah, so going forward, Airbnb would actually be able to take it right off the top when you reserve Airbnb or when you pay Airbnb International before it comes back down to the local person. So in that way, the local people do not have to deal with this at all, they don't have to do the filings or anything. That's my understanding, anyway. And so, all we have to do is get the language for the agreement from Butler County, pass it as a resolution, and then submit it to Airbnb.
Okay.
So would you be kind enough to talk to Butler County?
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah. Thank you. Another thing that reminded me was that county news this morning was talking about short-term rentals. I've forgotten the rate up before.
Thank you, Dan. We have, do you two wish to go over anything before we?
I figured we'd, since Mr. Cottler's.
Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to touch on schedule-wise, that's it for projects. I think everything else can wait until next week. Schedule-wise, remember that tomorrow was the national event, so if anybody wants to go up to Erie for their son, I think you said it starts 1:30?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll need to leave here at like noon in order to get up there.
I'm working with someone and children in need tomorrow, so I'm not available for that.
Okay. Could you maybe send out an email to township supervisor, remind them?
Yeah, we already did once, I think Jeff gave me a copy of the, and we can remind them again if you'd like.
All right, but they're at conference.
That's right. The township supervisor's at conference.
That's why I had it on my calendar to go to dinner with township supervisors today. Because I'm going to be there for a night.
Just boroughs in the city would not be at the conference, just peace acts, but I forgot about that.
Yeah, right.
Perfect timing on that, huh?
Yes.
All right, we have some guests here with us. Would you like to bring up your issue?
Yes, I'm reading what I discuss here. Go first, but the three of us here are essentially here for the same reasons. There is, well, oil has been developed in Warren, that's where I'm mostly interested in, and other one is about to be potentially developed in Pleasant Township, is what the tools are here. So, but again, I sent a copy of the issued paper to commissioners, and I don't know if that got circulated and heard any, so I can do, if you want a copy, give me a couple of different copies. Essentially, I'm personally here in a spirit of inquiry and to understand really what the county's position is and the reason why the county doesn't seem to feel that it has a role in enforcing its own ordinance on oil and gas development, especially oil and gas development that occurs in floodplains and residential neighborhoods. And if you read the issued paper, read it, you know that what I've done is I've cited various articles from the ordinance that seem to pertain and yet are not enforced, and they're enforced, to my knowledge, on every other commercial or industrial use like oil and gas. Well development seems to be excluded for reasons that I don't understand. So I guess what I'm looking for is finding out what the legal authorities might be that prohibit the county from that type of enforcement, or other reasons that might prevent the county from enforcing its zoning laws.
Dan, can you answer that for the new statistics?
Yeah, if I could, going back into the time when the zoning ordinance was first created, back in the 1960s, oil and gas development was addressed in that ordinance, but it was addressed as a use by special exception, which meant that the zoning officer didn't have the authority to, you know, address it, had to get it before what we call the zoning hearing board, a five-member volunteer body appointed by the county commissioners. And I've been with the county since 1990, and began my service as the zoning administrator for the first eight years of my employment with the county. In that time, Michael has done some research, four, five?
Number eleven.
Eleven altogether, applications before the zoning hearing board for that type of use. They all came from the same company over in Erie County. None of the locals had ever, over all that time since 1968, ever gone through and applied for a special exception. A lot of these wells that are out there are way off the beaten path. You came and really tell us an oil lease wrote unless you would actually go back there. And going on private property was something that we were discouraged from doing without the permission of the owner. But going back to the drilling company in Erie County, they would submit an application for a special exception, the board would advertise and hold its hearing, and there was only one single question that ever came up from any of the residents who attended, and that was, what's going to happen to my water supply? Well, the board nor the staff are not geologists, we could not answer that question. It's something that's still left more than the hands of the DEP, which would have been DER at the time. So, in reviewing the history behind the hearings, the planning commission back about in 1996 just recommended to the commissioners to pull oil and gas extraction entirely out of the ordinance, because the only concern seemed to be people's water supply and not anything else relative to the activity. When we adopted a brand-new ordinance in 2008, it did not include oil and gas. There was also the Oil and Gas Act that was in effect at the time, and then along came Act 13, which at the time prohibited municipalities from regulating the industry. They had to allow it in all zoning districts. That was challenged, and the courts have ruled that municipalities can regulate that particular use in zoning districts, certain zoning districts, as long as they allow it someplace within their municipalities. The problem that we have had here in Warren County, and I brought the two maps, the relative pertinent to the two municipalities that these folks represent, this is, and you can be fucking quick and take a little bit, this is Conawongo Township, okay? And this map is done on a scale of one inch equals 1,000 feet. To tell you what the colors mean, everything in green is agricultural. Everything in the two different shades of the tan are business or commercial. The gray is in industrial, and we have two shades of pink. Those are both our residential districts. We have a residential one and a residential two. Now, when these districts were first laid out, there was the belief at the time that the county was going to continue to grow. 1968 population was on the increase. The elected officials and the planning commission at the time felt that as the county continued to grow, residential development was going to reach out into these areas here. So they set the zoning districts up as residential one to reflect that projected expansion of residential uses. If you look at these lines on here, are all property lines. And you can see that a number of the residential one districts are sizable to the tune of a few hundred acres. To simply say drilling is not allowed in our residential districts would hamstring all of these properties here, and I can tell you for a fact, there are wells all over those hillsides. So it would prohibit them from doing any activities there. You were. Pleasant Township, it's the same kind of situation. This map, however, is done on a scale of one inch equals 3,000 feet because of tax facility. Now, everything north of here, this is Conawongo, we're into Pleasant Township here. Again, 1 to 1,000, you see huge tracts of residential properties. So to prohibit the activity in an R1 district is, I think, it would create a big backlash. An option could be to develop another, or create another residential district for the rural areas that are like these, large tracts. Keep the small ones R1, and then the R2 is actually set up for multifamily. You'll see duplexes and apartment buildings in R2s. But in these outlying areas there, like maybe a rural residential that would allow for those kinds of activities to.
Or maybe tracts of land that are greater than a certain acreage.
Yeah, it's greater than a certain minimum acreage. But you would have to do it so that you're not going to create some spot zoning. If you look here, these are a couple of large tracts of land here, too, whereas they're surrounded by rather small tracts.
Could you also do it by, you know, not necessarily, not really necessarily restricting or prohibiting it, but do it by limitations in terms of, like, property lines?
Yeah, and you raise a good point, but our research in this tells us that state regulations preempt local. And so, the DEP says you cannot drill a well closer than 200 feet to an existing structure, okay? But not property lines. They don't address property lines, and there's a reason for that that I found out. Under a lot of these properties here, you have one subsurface owner, but multiple surface owners. You cannot restrict by law a subsurface owner for accessing his subsurface rights. That's where it gets really complicated. And so to simply say, so far from a surface property line is not going to solve the problem, especially if that subsurface right goes under multiple properties. We have spent an awful lot of time looking at this whole thing here. My only suggestion was to maybe create another residential district to rezone the larger ones.
But I mean, you're essentially talking about a massive rezoning, though.
Across the board, in the whole county, yeah.
Which in some ways might not be bad in the sense that there are areas that are probably more restricted than they need to be.
There's no, excuse me, there's no way to just change the ordinance?
Well, we have to do, the map is part of the ordinance, Cindy, so we have to create the district.
Okay.
And list the uses, and then change the maps to reflect which properties are in those districts, that newly created district. So it's actually, it would be a two-step process, where you have the planning commission come up with a proposed set of amendments along with map changes, and then you folks as commissioners hold a public hearing and have the authority to make those final changes. So this has been back and forth in the courts a lot. What really stirred the hornet's nest, if you will, were some activities in southwestern Pennsylvania, down south of Pittsburgh, with some unconventional gas extraction, the Marcellus and Utica and so forth. But like I said, going back to my original comment, the only thing we ever heard from folks is, what's going to happen to my water supply? Can we just not feel qualified to answer that? The DEP addresses setbacks from buildings and so forth and other things, including floodplains. So we've just had the hands-off approach and let the DEP take care of it. We have a situation here in North Warren, one proposed in Pleasant Township. The one in North Warren has already been approved by the DEP, they've already punched the hole. If we were to create something restricting that activity in all residential one, they would still be grandfathered in. So it would not solve the existing situation. Now, I can tell you, though, that the North Warren Municipal Authority, working with the Conawongo Township Supervisors, is developing a source water protection plan. And part of that, they're going to come to the county and ask that the county adopt an overlay for two zones that they've identified to protect their public water supply system. And in that, we can insert, oil and gas extraction is prohibited within zone one and zone two. So if, for instance, any other properties within that identified area, and I apologize, I don't have that map with me right now, but it's a pretty sizable zone, too. Oil and gas wells could not be punched within those two zones.
Okay, that's kind of my issue with this, is that I personally don't like the idea of having abroad across the board boilerplate handling of this, because to me, to some degree, it's a community-by-community issue, because you could end up, there are certain people who have absolutely no issue with this, would be furious with any kind of a change that would affect them, by their appearance negatively. On the other hand, there's no recourse for a community who says, like, within the walls of this area, we don't, you know, we don't want any drilling. And so my question is, with what you're talking about with, like, you know, spaces that are designated as no drilling, how is it determined that a community may, or how are those lines drawn?
Okay, what would happen, Jeff, is it would go through the zoning ordinance, and if things were to move forward with my thought or suggestion of creating a new zoning district specific to rural residential, you could say in the zoning ordinance, in residential one districts, those remaining, oil and gas extraction is prohibited. The city does that. But the city, if you look around, all small pieces of property, very close proximity to each other, but RR1 is very different than their RR1 because of the size of those lots. So the authority then is going to ask the county, which would include the commissioners since it would be an amendment to the ordinance, to do an overlay zone of that zone one and two for their source water withdrawal area, and it would act as a transparent overlay on top of the existing zoning district. So in other words, if it goes, if that zone two goes into, like, commercial districts, those commercial uses would still be allowed, but if there's oil and gas extraction planned in that particular area, that would be prohibited.
Okay, so if they're permitted to do this, say we approve that, then why couldn't all municipalities do basically the same thing in their municipality?
Well, we're doing it because we have a zoning ordinance in place that covers these municipalities.
Okay.
Covers 12.
Yes.
Right.
The unzoned municipalities, I don't know what they would do, other than adopt their own zoning ordinance.
And that may be an easier solution to this issue, rather than creating a new R1 district.
Well, the other one, my thought was leave the R1s for the small property, but create a new district for the large tracts.
Right.
And new residential districts.
So, in your opinion, that would be a more simplified method of correcting this?
I would think that that would be better, because then you're not hamstringing those large tracts where there is activity going on and where there's not been a situation similar to what these folks here are facing. And I got to tell you, this is the first that I've heard of extraction drawing attention to the local residents in my 27 years with the county.
Dan, you have a map that shows, I think you guys are more aware of the situation in North Warren, but because it's sort of there, maybe you can look at it. I have a map, a flat map, that shows you the location of, you know, what we're talking about in Pleasant Township, and maybe that would be easier.
Yeah, it's on the, on the Tany Street?
Yes, maybe it'll be easier than.
Well, sorry, Steve.
Could you do it by yourself inside?
Christine Tool.
Christine, nice job.
So the flat map here, if you just take, just so they have an idea of what Dan is even talking about in the residential, if you hold it so that it, this is really north, heading north, so this is north-south, the, this is our property, this is a little piece of two acres, and it's surrounded by residential property.
Okay.
As of right now, the well location is about five to 10 feet off of my property line, is where the proposed well is. And so I think, you know, what Dan is saying is that in these small areas, of course, we're concerned. In terms of my property value, all of the neighbors over in this area are going to be impacted by all kinds of issues with the well. Stuff out here certainly, you know, isn't an issue for people, and that's the problem with the way it's zoned right now, whereas something sitting in the middle of a residential neighborhood is kind of an issue. And I don't think any of us would want an oil of 5 to 10 feet. Now, if this is approved, it will go in because, you know, it's already legal.
DEP has given their permission?
Well, it's still, it's on the very end of the process. It's still trying to get a variance for a water well, and the DEP is very generous with their variances. That's an opinion, sorry, but.
I won't argue.
So I'm going to say, you know, in my opinion, it's most likely it will be granted. Maybe I'm wrong, but anyway, whether it is granted or not, at this point, you know, there's nothing we can do about this well. But this isn't right for residences in an R1 zone. Nobody wants it in the neighborhood. It's going to be a big loss of property value and, you know, health issues and quality of life issues. So what we're doing really is looking to the future and saying, how can we prevent this? We don't want to stop oil drilling, certainly, not in Pennsylvania, you know, all of these places which are not right next to somebody. And that little dot on that map is the only spot that is 200 feet from all of the houses. If you look at the overlapping circles, that's it.
Who owns the mineral rights?
The guy who owns this piece of property.
Yeah, the owners.
The rest of the mineral rights, every person owns all the way around that property. It was originally one property, which was broken up, and the mineral rights went with all of those properties. That's what we've done in research.
We own mineral rights of our property.
That's really a good strategy.
And that's good, because.
That's very good.
Yeah, you're not having to deal with subsurface. I have some information here, but this is some research and court cases on some challenges versus the Allegheny National Forest to be able to get in there and extract their subsurface rights. I'm not going to go through it, I'm just providing that for you for your reading pleasure. And then I've also included what the Oil and Gas Act currently says about, you know, what she was talking about, Mrs. Tool was talking about, with the setbacks of 200 feet from structures, and then also dealing with floodplain. Now, they do, granted, we have a floodplain ordinance in the zoning ordinance, but part of the review process with the DEP is remitting it from the floodplain standpoint, so we leave it in their hands. Michael has some background on this, that he did some research on, but there are certain conditions that have to be met in order for the floodplain rigs to kick in and prohibit that kind of an operation there, huh? If you want to add to that any, Michael?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of information. Basically, the thing came up with the well in North Warren there. Last thing we learned that, at the county, we have one thing to say, they were the floodplains. It's up to the DEP to approve that issue of the permits. So we can't.
So approve the permit?
Right.
For the well.
Right. And that's part of the, the floodplain's part of that overall application, from my understanding.
You know, where they're looking to place the tanks is not in the floodplain.
Correct.
But the activities have been stopped there because they need to have a stormwater plan approved by the township, and there haven't been issues with that. The little access road that goes from around down the end back to the well pad itself. I can say, I've been up at the area, and the neighboring property just to the north never had water sitting in the yard for long periods of time, once the creek received it, and there is water sitting there now. So the road width they've got going into that is causing a problem with the water leak site.
We equally have the same problem with our property, because the whole area there, there's a lot of clay in it. And right now, when we have heavy rains, there's sections of our yard that will have standing water, or at least you can't even, you know, drive a lawnmower towards to take care of the property. That whole property that's in the woods has those exact same soils. Once they start putting a road system in there to get access, who knows what's going to happen. People downstream, because they're actually, you know, the contour of the land is down, obviously towards the Allegheny River, those properties over towards Press Street Boulevard have had a lot of problems with standing water in their properties. And, you know, one of the things I found out in my discussions with the DEP is, you know, obviously, they have limited resources. And so, you know, the information that they're supplied by whomever is making the application, you know, for the permit, they take that as being true and true and correct. And until people, you know, bring things to their attention, like we have in our instance, you know, they don't have any factual information or any concerns, I mean, brought to them, they'll just let, you know, let the permit go through, which is pretty much what I think happened, you know, in North Warren, was an application was made, from their standpoint, they didn't see any problems. Now, you bring up a good point, but in terms of, well, perhaps if it's in the floodplain, maybe they should have recognized something.
They should have.
But you know what? It didn't happen.
Yeah. And when we tried to contact them afterwards, it was too late? They'd already taken our issue?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's, I think it's important to remember that you're kind of at a confluence of a couple of issues. This is like one of those rare situations where, you know, a couple, the way things are set up, come to meet, and you get to the situation like the well in Conawongo, which everybody goes, well, how was that ever approved? Like, everybody that's ever looked at it kind of has a look, you know? And the thing is, is that I talked with Aaron Wells from DEP, like, one of the regional directors, and about this situation. And it's one of those weird things where, on the one hand, you have DEP, which has the law that they follow and have to make determinations on. But where, when it comes generally to, like, where wells are generally placed, residential, non-residential, they kick it back to the county. They say, it's up to you to figure out what your zoning is going to be. So you go back to the county situation, and you have what Dan talks about, which is limited resources, limited ability to make determinations, a lot of politics, a lot of, you know, who likes who, and all that kind of stuff. And so, that makes it difficult for them, for us, to then, and then that's when the can gets kicked back to DEP to say, listen, we don't have the resources to really evaluate this, you know? And the other thing is, is that you have, like, a regional issue, too, because if we make broad determinations on stuff, there are going to be people that'll be negatively affected by it economically, you know? So this is one of those things that's going to require a lot of discussion to figure out some kind of solution to it, and there may not be a solution. But I guess that's kind of my point, is I don't want anybody to think that anyone doesn't want to hear what the concerns are, or that nobody's willing to, like, work or listen to the situation, because I think that there is a legitimate concern. And even with the environmental issues aside, the points that you bring up about property value, I think is a very important one, because if you live in a neighborhood and, you know, with kids or whatever, you know, you want to bring families into your community, and they're going to move into a house that's going to have oil tanks right next door to it, when they didn't previously, you know, that's going to be a concern, you know? So I'm really glad that you guys brought this information here, and I think it's something that we have to continue to have a conversation about.
Where is supposed to structure?
Where is what?
That's a good question.
Okay, so our home's up, up towards this direction, but there's homes, you know, obviously, all the way down here. I have a shed down here. This is 200.
What's the definition of a structure?
A structure, and that's.
Man-made building with.
Well, I think the DEP is, will, I think there will be other spots in this property when the DEP starts handing out their, these are four sheds. Because right now, this is about 200 feet from my home. about 200 feet from my home, but there are sheds here. Let's say there's a shed here and it's 200 feet exactly from that. The house is actually another 40 feet back, so maybe you pop another one right there, 40 feet away from that one.
There's a phrase in Latin, nosis dis peio, which essentially means to beguile or to cheat. I'm wondering if you were close enough in order to have an addition that fell within that 200?
It's true. I mean, if the house, if the house was, that shed is that much farther.
We shouldn't have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, the point is that, you know, none of us say there shouldn't be oil and gas here. But this is obviously not appropriate in a residential neighborhood where you have children, you have people trying to sleep, you have gas fumes falling down, you say after street, this is the assholes, not like this. You know, it's obviously not appropriate. But right now, it's legal. So I think there should be some kind of solution. It's interesting to say about setbacks, because we thought that would be an easy one. Because really, that's why nobody's complained before, because if it's, you know, a couple hundred feet from your property line and it's shielded by shrubs and all, you know, who's going to really complain? We all drive cars. But five feet from my property line with no requirements for any kind of shielding from that well, you know, is inappropriate for my health, safety, and property value.
This distance issue is interesting, because in North Warren, the well's apparently precisely 201 feet from a neighbor's house.
That's basically what this is.
The question he has is, did they measure from the corner of my house or from the roof line? Because the roof overhangs the house.
Yeah. And we're going back to the comment about the shed and the question about the shed. This is what it says. Wells may not be drilled within 200 feet, measured horizontally from a vertical well bore to a building, I guess you could argue a shed is a building, or water well, existing when the copy of the plant is mailed, is required by section law without written consent of the owner of the building or water well.
And so perhaps Mike can address that, because he can.
Yeah. You know, when you read that regulation, there's actually, like it was mentioned before, you know, a municipality cannot prevent a person from, you know, getting into the subsurface rights that they own. And so there's provision for variance. But when they talk about buildings, you know, the DEP will generally say, it has to be an occupied structure. Well, you know, if you have a working shed, they will most likely consider that to be an occupied structure, or less a working shed. A working shed is somewhere where I, you know, conduct my hobby on a routine basis, I suppose. You know, is it just a shed that I have my lawnmower in and I go out there and start it up and pull it out? That's not, they would say that's not a, you know, a working building. You know, it's not an occupied building. You know, when it comes to water wells, the regulation, you know, clearly talks about water wells, also talks about water sources. There's a difference between a water source and a water well. In our case, we've started a water well that exists on our property. Most likely the DEP decided, you know, they will grant a variance for it as long as all great things are done. And I suspect the same thing could happen if, you know, the individual that wants to harvest those races, if they want to do it, they're in drill, and you still within the 200 feet, they can apply for variance. And if the DEP cannot find all for, you know, confined reasons to deny that permit, you know, they will grant the variance. I think that's what we all have to recognize, is that, you know, as, as we, you know, harvest our mineral resources, you know, people are gonna find newer technologies, other technologies in terms of how they go in and get, you know, get those resources. And, you know, we should all be cognizant that, you know, the surface owner should have some protections in terms of its property, its property, you know, proximity to things.
One solution, and I agree with what was said about, this is a jurisdictional gray area once you get into floodplain or a residential neighborhood. Because I called the DEP and I asked them, what are, what's my recourse? And they say, third county, because DEP, well, it authorizes the well, doesn't authorize the well pad, the access road, and other structures that are built on the property in order to actually drill that well. And in the case of North Warren, it's the structures that caused the problem. It's the well pad 40 by 80 feet that's essentially an earthen dam that was built in the floodplain. That's impacting neighbors in that neighborhood. So it's one important issue. There seems to be one possibly easy solution could be to make this a conditional use in our one neighborhoods. Because conditional uses, correct me if I'm wrong, require the zoning board to actually review it. And there might be opportunity for public to raise issues at that time.
And that's, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but the problem I see happening and going back to, going back to calling the township for instance, all of this up in here with this huge plot of land and the hundreds of wells that are there, we're never gonna know. If you just make a conditional use in your R1, we're never gonna know about those.
Now with these permits, every single one of them are amazing. Are...
When I say these purposes, are they open and are you talking about?
Yeah. Well, a couple of things to consider. One is that Dan, as Dan has stated, it seems to me like we have way too much property zoned R1, frankly. It looks like to me like there's enormous tracts of land there that are not gonna be residential anytime soon. And especially with, you know, that's one thing. The second thing is, is that a lot of that property, wells have already been drilled on it. I mean, like the notion that there's gonna be a ton of well activity there, I have a hard time believing that, although I don't have the numbers on that. It could be, I think that it'd be worth looking at to have a discussion with the municipalities about, you know, and the planning commission about what their feeling is about the idea of having, you know, like a conditional use set up for legitimately residential, like zoned properties, or having an addition, like changing the zoning set up so that you're, you know, legitimately, because that's my thing, is having a bunch of stuff zoned residential that isn't residential. I mean, you're hamstringing those properties as well with all the regulations related to residential properties.
Yeah, that's why I'm suggesting maybe a third zoning district called rural residential that would allow for that kind of activity. Just the R1, which you would have very small properties, 50 by 100, 100 by 200, those small ones, that would prohibit it.
So that discussion would take place at this zoning?
Well, it would be through the planning commission and onto the commissioners to amend the zoning ordinance and the map to create that new district. That we would be, in a sense, adding one more zoning district to the A-line we already have, and then just making that rural residential and actually identifying those on the law. Going back to what you were suggesting with the comprehensive rezoning in all 12 municipalities that are under the ordinance and just looking at those large tracts of residential one to reconsider for rural residential.
Because our residential ordinance, like having an area zoned residential, I mean, creates a greater level of regulation of those properties.
Right. Typically, the R1 is the most restrictive.
Yeah, so if, so if you took, I mean, this is where I see it as somewhat of a trade-off. You have huge sections that you could hypothetically then open up for other development, because they would no longer have the restrictions of rural, or rather like R1 status. At the same time, give people in urbanized communities the opportunity to at least have a hearing when a well's gonna be drilled, to, for them to at least voice their complaints. I mean, the issue, one of the issues with the Conawango well is, is that it was essentially done overnight with very little oversight.
We never got noticed of it. I don't know if the municipality, yeah.
They did, but it probably got shelved. They can't to this day find the letter, but they did sign the, you know, the mail registration receipt.
Well, yeah, and I mean, that's kind of the thing is, is for most of the communities or in North Warren, for instance, I mean, there are no other wells in that area that I'm aware of. Are there?
Uh, there is upstream, a half mile, behind BEI.
Okay, behind BEI?
Yeah.
Okay. But, I mean, in that residential area, I mean, having someone drill to you would, without any notice, to you as a resident, would be a surprise.
It would be, it was a total surprise, as per to your well.
And that's kind of my point, is some areas, I mean, it's understood that there's gonna be development of that nature. In other areas, there's not. And I mean, I think that the community should at least have an opportunity to say, you know, voice their concerns over what, or have their concerns quietened, you know? I mean, I think that's part of the price of trying to drill in a residential neighborhood, shouldn't it be? I mean, I, you know, I don't, I think that everybody here agrees that we're not here to put the kibosh to the oil industry to prevent people from drilling. But at the same time, like it can't be a free for all. I mean, there are legitimate property concerns. If we were gonna put in a halfway house, think about the number of concerns that'd be voiced about that. You know, if we were gonna put in, you know, we had, you know, if we were gonna put in a work release center, you know, put in a, move to jail, how many, how many citizens would show up for that area? You know? Like, if you're gonna drill in an urban community, I mean, I think there should be some ability for the community around it to voice their concerns.
I have a question. I think easier, as Dan was talking about, it's overly prohibited. But in terms of long-term, you know, work of the town now, that seems to be easier than having something conditional use for it. It was having all of these hearings and you have different things, you know, happening.
I appreciate that.
I, I think in a way, in terms of my case of mine, even if I was a rural, I am rural right now, you know, if you're an R1 resident, you know that they're not putting oil on your neighborhood as opposed to, I have to wash the paper and find out perhaps, and why can't we put money that I have to go worry about and then the planning board will have to be holding hearings and all. You know, in a lot of ways, would it be simpler? And it better for me as a resident, I feel a lot of that.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I guess, well, can you say to my point? I feel a lot of that, if I didn't have that hanging over my head.
And that was my question to you earlier. You know, since Conawango Township is providing this map overlay of the...
With their source water protection plan for the northern municipalities.
Exactly. Couldn't we just do that in every municipality?
Well, it's gotta be a source water protection for a public water system.
Okay. But couldn't we do something that's similar to that, but in regard to, this is a no drilling oil zone or something like that?
But then you get in the place of, how do you make that determination? You're gonna have to meet with every single, all of the 12 zoned municipalities and figure out what areas you're legitimately, and there's gonna be, and I mean, I understand the concerns, I welcome the concerns, but at the same time, you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna be mad that you're doing anything at all. I mean, they're, they're perfectly happy drilling in rural, in urban areas. I mean, so in those communities, are you gonna tell them that they can't drill? You know, there should, there has to be a discussion both ways, you know? Like, you can't, because the thing is, is like, let's put it this way, rezoning everything is gonna be a huge undertaking, just in and of itself. Okay? So like, if you, like, I know what you're saying about, okay, we're gonna do R1s, all R1s, or no, you can't drill. That map is gonna have to be dramatically redrawn. And there's gonna be people on there that have R1 properties that they're drilling on right now that are gonna be furious if they, if their property remains R1. Like, so this is what I mean, there's gotta be, it's a very complex situation beyond just the colors on that map. So to me, it seems like there has to be a variable where, in the places where they really, really don't want it, where the community agrees that they don't want it, they have to have the opportunity to try to prevent that from happening. But if you do it across the board, every, every R1, there's no drilling, that map is gonna have to change pretty dramatically. And there's, and you're probably gonna have to have an R1A for everybody who wants to, you know, like, I mean, there's gonna be, I, it's, it's a, that's an even bigger can of worms than having a few hearings because people want to drill in urban areas.
Could you solve that problem, so if I look, you know, obviously you've got these mapping systems. Could you solve that by, as you're saying, we feel that, you know, any R1 areas that have properties of about this size, whatever this size might be, maybe it's two acres, three acres, you know, there's some number, right? And then if there's a certain concentration of this in terms of, you know, of grouping concentration, this is, you know, here's, here's an area, for instance, you know, I don't know what Youngsville does, but like downtown Youngsville, they said, like, yeah, you could more be drilling here. Could it be managed some way in that fashion? So then you come up with these, you know, these areas, you say like, yeah, this is where we should be excluding this.
That's, that's something that sounds similar to something that the state of Pennsylvania or the federal government would do. And what happens is, is, and I'm just saying, it would be the same situation that we're dealing with with the flood maps and everything else, is Dan would have a number, a bunch of people coming into his office on a regular basis, basically flipping out because they've been unnecessarily lumped into a group with a bunch of other people and they don't think it's fair. All of these, I mean, it's impossible to see how all of these properties are divided up and what their uses are. I mean, because I, and the only reason I say that is because there are people working round the clock, looking and analyzing at all of these properties, buying little pieces of them up, buying large pieces of them up, dividing them up, putting them together. I just think that you're gonna get it, it, you, there's no way to just easily put something over this. I mean, I may be wrong about that. Maybe there is an easy way to just say, okay, this whole section's not, you can't drill here. But...
We would have to apply uniformly. If you're gonna do a conditional use for residential one, then it's got to apply to this huge one here, the same as with this tiny little one over here. And to do an overlay, I think I'd wanna get a legal opinion on something like that, because then it's, it's kind of going outside of zoning. The reason the overlay makes sense for the North Warren project is to protect its withdrawal area for the public water system, subsurface withdrawal area. Here, in this case here, it's just to restrict certain types of activities within an identified area. And maybe it makes more sense to just create a specific zoning designation as opposed to an overlay for certain types of properties.
See, and that's the thing is, is like that what you were talking about with the overlay, I mean, isn't really gonna address their concern.
It's not gonna address, well...
The Pleasant, it's not gonna address Pleasant's concern.
It's not.
But there, my, the way that I would, I don't know what I'm gonna say here, but I probably shouldn't. But the way that I would address it is to figure out a way, or one way that you could potentially address it, and I don't even know if this is legal or not, is to have some kind of setup where the cluster of properties around a certain area that, you know, absolutely do not want anything related to them, should have the opportunity to, you know, prevent that from happening. I just, I, it, I don't know how you would do that, whether there would be a regulatory opportunity where if so, if so many people write a letter or sign, check a box or whatever, you know?
Well, before Ben has to leave, the, this came up at a planning commission meeting back a few months ago, Pleasant Township Supervisors, where they're along with some residents and some folks from Conawango. And the planning commission asked the township supervisors of Pleasant to kind of go back to their municipality and put together what they thought would be a reasonable amendment to the zoning ordinance, and then come back to the planning commission as a starting point. We've not heard back from the supervisors yet. I'm not sure what stage they are in that, at this point. But the commission knows the background of where we used to regulate it and why we got out of regulating it. And if, if the county is gonna get into regulating, it's, we've gotta be very careful not to overstep bounds because of the Oil and Gas Act. And it's something we, we're not gonna be able to throw together overnight.
Oh, no way.
Do you anticipate that Pleasant is putting together proposals?
I don't know.
What I know, yeah, what I know is that their attorney has gotten back to them in regards to, you know, what are the legal ramifications? Can they actually do something? You know, and so that, they apparently have that information. Were they sent? So I don't know. And like you mentioned before, all those supervisors are down in Harrisburg districts.
So what it boils down to is the Supreme Court did rule that municipalities do have the right to regulate the activity through zoning, but there are preemptions.
Well, and that's how DEP recently sued those two municipalities, because they wrote regulations that have... regulations that had undone, had undid the state law essentially.
Yeah. This information that I've given you there kind of gives you a summary of what has happened over the course of time. That top article that you have there, Jeff, I think is dated just with last year, 2016?
Yep.
So, you know, it gives you the most...
And City School of Law also has a website, the U of M, that has all the various regulations that deal with oil and gas and, you know, some municipalities.
Also, just to come back to the conditional use issue, would it, would it be expensive or prohibitive to, you know, have those who are interested in drilling in residential areas go through this additional layer of review? Well, how many wells are being drilled in residential neighborhoods? I don't really know. I know that in 2016, DEP permitted forty-six wells in one county, only one of which, that I know of, was in a residential neighborhood. They give you Latin long, I didn't plot all those on the map, but if someone would like to, or maybe I will, just to see...
Yeah, I'd be curious to see, we're, we're curious to find out, like, because, like I said, these, some of these large tracts here, they're nothing but forest land.
Right.
There's not a single residence on it, but there's own residential one.
So, if it's only one or two wells a year, and it comes before the zoning board, that might be a very easy thing.
Well, that's kind of, that was the question that I was asking, was like, how, what numbers are we legitimately dealing with? Because, and of those, what did you say, forty-three?
Forty-six.
Forty-six? Of those forty-six, how many were in the twelve zoned municipalities that we deal with?
Right. And how many were even drilled, that's kind of our permit.
Yeah, the industry has kind of stepped back a little bit, but I think that's soon to change.
And Dan can correct me, but if we make it as a conditional, then don't we have to create a criteria of what's allowable from zone, so they can actually make this?
Yeah, I mean, we can't say, we can't, we can't overstep the, the Oil and Gas Act and say two hundred feet from a property line, because if the subsurface property line goes beyond that, you know?
So really, with a conditional use even?
We can do things like require fencing around a pump jack if the lot is of a certain minimum, or, yeah, maximum size, or minimum size, and a few other things, like the tank, maybe the tank batteries, but we've not gotten into the tank battery thing because if we start regulating those, that means we have to regulate the ferro-gas tanks for propane, which are significantly smaller, where do you draw the line?
To address what you just said, Michael Lee, nice thing about having a zoning review is they would ask, you have all the permits, you mean? One of those would be the stormwater permit. And, for example, one in North Warren was drilled without having a stormwater permit in place, or erosion and sediment control plant, which is supposed to be in place, which may not be. So, it's a layer of review that makes sure that all of the laws are being complied with. And I think, from my perspective, that's a, that's a significant value add that county government could provide.
But the only thing is, how would we prevent a well being drilled in the neighborhood? I mean, what kinds of, what kinds of regulations could you use, like, say, the situation here, where, you know, there'll be a well perhaps five feet off my property line, what kind of recourse would you guys have in the zoning? If you don't have, you can, there was...
Yeah. This is the same, this is similar, though, to a rezoning, though. I mean, we have to make a judgment call based on what the situation is, and we can vote against a rezoning if we feel like the situ, I mean, at least there's another board of people that are gonna legitimately review the information.
If, as far as actually the location of the hole in the ground, though, I don't think we can regulate that, because that's not considered a structure. We could regulate the tanks, require a fence around the pump jack, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna solve the concern, and, and, you know, I agree that it's a, I just don't know what an easy answer is at this point.
So I guess what you're saying is unless you actually do a rezon, or just type of property, will not, will not allow it, like, the city of Warren does, you know, this is R1s in the city of Warren you can't drill in. So unless you're saying they're happy with something like that, then basically you have no control over a situation with your well, I mean, you don't control in terms of, you gotta make some of your fence, so other than that, it's still gonna be there in the middle of residential neighborhood. So I think that's what everyone needs to think about, is that what we want in our community, is that gonna help our community grow into the future? As people constantly say, I'm not gonna buy Mr. Smith's house with a well in the backyard, or, okay, I'll give you, you know, some house for it. So I think that's something we need to think about, if the conditional use thing isn't actually needed to be.
Yeah, you know, I, when I, when I, when I look at this whole thing here, because of how technical it can get, how complicated it can get, I would feel more comfortable going to an attorney who has a background, a strong, solid background in zoning, to be able to determine the best way to approach the situation like this.
I agree.
Because, you know, you're, you're up, up against an industry that is well-established here, and, you know, one of the documents I had given you was put together by a firm that does the extraction, and they've done a lot of research on those court cases, so it's not...
Well, I, I mean, I, I agree to some extent, I do, and I understand the kind of concerns about the oil and gas industry, and oil and gas is a major industry in Pennsylvania, needs to grow, it needs to thrive, at the same time, the city is eliminated drilling within city limits, that's why...
And your residential districts.
In the residential...
Yeah, you can drill in the industrial districts.
Yeah, but if you drive across the train tracks, there's a bunch of oil wells there, and there's a reason they're there, because it's beyond the city residential limits. And, and my thing is, is I don't, I would never have any interest in eliminating drilling anywhere, just broadly speaking, but I think that it's important to have a discussion about allowing communities the opportunity, at least on some level, to make a determination about what goes in their backyard, and, and giving them an opportunity to voice those concerns. In every other situation, there would be a public hearing, people would be able to complain publicly about whatever the situation is, try to sway the opinion of the public officials associated with it, you know, stuff that affects people on a daily basis, and I gave several examples earlier, and, and right now with the current setup, granted, I don't think this is something that's gonna happen every year, I don't think it's gonna happen all the time, you know, I think that we have a couple of examples that have come out that, like I said, are a confluence of, you know, regulation, politics, and everything else, but, you know, I, I, at the same time that I understand that there are a lot of challenges, I think that at the same time, it's worth having a discussion about, because I don't think it's impossible with the, with the right willpower and the right work to do, to, to, you know, give communities an opportunity to deal with the situation.
Well, I think that we're on the right track, at least we're having this discussion, and we can take it to the planning committee and see where we go from there.
Yeah, we can contact Pleasant Township and see if they've gone any further. Now, they are at the association meeting, so, I think they're off this week, yeah.
It's Thursday, it's all...
But the county planning commission doesn't meet again until the first Tuesday of next month, whichever day that is, sometime next week. And I can see if they've made any headway on their end. But I would like to actually, you know, discuss this in a little more detail with the planning commission, do more research on the legal side of things, because the last thing I want to do is the county adopt something that can get easily challenged in court and overturned.
We don't wanna see you do that anymore. Is there anything that we as citizens can do to assist?
Just continue to provide information. That's helpful.
Yeah, and I think that's something to be mindful of as well, is that, you know, we've got, you know, DEP short-staffed, we're short-staffed, everybody's short-staffed, everybody's running around trying to do five hundred things, so, you know, if there's something in your backyard that's bothering you, digging up all the information, sharing that with us, continuing the conversation is the best way to, to affect it, I think.
Dan, I would like you to address with the planning commission the idea of the conditional use plan out, and then...
Now, conditional use requires planning commission review, county commissioner action. Special exception is zoning hearing board.
Okay. See, the special exception, it seems as though that's more aligned...
That might be more appropriate, because they can ask the same questions, show us your approved stormwater plan, your approved ENS plan, all those kinds of things, and rather than making a multi-step process, because then, through the conditional use, the way the conditional use process works is the planning commission reviews it, makes a recommendation onto the commissioners, who then hold a public hearing and file a decision. With a special exception, the application comes into Michael, is pushed to the zoning hearing board, they hold a hearing right away, and then can attach reasonable conditions. So you're, you're omitting one step along the way with a special exception, but still arriving at the same objective, which is to have a public hearing and an opportunity to attach any reasonable conditions, as well as verify that the proper other permits have been put in place. So my recommendation would be special exception, even though a lot of the literature we read talks about conditional uses, but that's with the governing body. Special exception would be the zoning hearing board.
And you were talking about how property owners would know, part of either of those processes, property owners within three hundred feet of the set parcel is notified by letter.
By him. We post, we post the property, he notifies everybody within three hundred feet, and we run a, add a newspaper.
Which one day I think he should be cognizant of, and most people don't realize this, the only reason that we found out about this situation was because a township supervisor provided us with the information that they received. There's no requirement for the drill to notify us in this situation.
Not like you have something within two hundred feet of it.
Right, in the situation originally.
So a special exception would come into play in their instance, then?
Right. We were the ones that had pointed out to the DEP that there was a water well that was being violated. And this, and that's, you know, that's another issue with Pleasant Township, you know, you've got a lot, a lot of properties that have their own water sources, but now are no longer on those water sources, but those water wells still exist and may even still be used, you know?
And, and I guess I just think we all need to think about, if we go to something like a special exception, if you still have no way to remove this oil well that's five feet from my property or whoever the next person is that this happens to, then, you know, fence is great, but my property value will still go way down, my quality of life in terms of breathing, and everything will go down, and I think, is that what we want? And so, is the special exception going to solve?
Well, and that's why I was offering a suggestion of creating an additional residential district, and just prohibiting it altogether in the R1.
Okay, so I think we have a lot to explore.
Yeah, I think everybody needs to think about that, and a special exception would help me in this instance, because it would require maybe a fence and some better water management, but my property value would still go down, my quality of life, so unless, you know, we do something else, then...
And, and if it is restricted from a newly defined R1 district, then we can't get it in trouble legally because we're allowing for it in all of the other zoning districts.
Exactly, exactly. And in the long run, that might be, especially because, you know, the idea of tourism, yeah, the idea of where we're heading to in the future in this county, obviously, it's not manufacturing, actually, in the state, you know, like, there's a word for that, so if we're heading towards encouraging tourism and encouraging people to come live here, I think we have to talk some of our R1 neighborhoods.
Well, we'll do some more research, and we'll contact the township Pleasant. As far as how long the situation goes, right now it's being held up by the supervisors, because they are not comfortable with this stormwater plan that has been provided, and there are problems there with stormwater that need to be addressed, so. And unfortunately, we can't go back on something that's already been permitted, or enforce them to remain in it.
Thank you for what you presented today.
Thanks for...
Thank you very much.
Great to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good job. It was nice to meet you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Have a good afternoon.
You too.
I'll be honest, I haven't eaten yet, but...
Are we done?
I think so.
We appreciate all you've presented, thank you.
Can we have turning it to...
Yeah. Can we, do you, did you pick that date just for that?
No, you told me the dates were on me that you had to...
I mean, did you pick today?
I have my own box on there. We only had one.
Do you, would you mind moving you ahead to the latest another day?
Right.
I don't think I have my schedule, so, because then...
Right. Yeah, 'cause I gotta get Angela's payroll stuff.
Yeah.